Hey, good evening, everybody. About two minutes ahead of schedule for our online town hall and meetup. Give folks a few minutes to get checked in. We're monitoring over here on another computer, the comments section tonight. And we are going to be opening up the floor for you to ask questions, make comments, respond, talk back to your preachers. We'd love to hear from you. Just leave a comment in the comments section down below. Or Sam's going to give you his phone number, and you can text him a message if you would like to raise something that you maybe don't want publicly announced. Just send it to Sam, and he'll raise it.
Yeah, I'm gonna put my cellphone number in the comments section here in a second. But it is 901-262-3627. So give me just a second to put that out there on the comments. And again, like Stephen said, if there's anything y'all want to ask, and you don't want it advertised on here, just send me a text, and we'll try to do our best answering or anything for you.
And I know it looks like we're setting up for the CNN, but we're not. This is gonna be a real casual time together tonight as we share together a little bit of word. Hey, he's got the volume on, too. We're, Sam Jones is watching, so that's a good thing. We're gonna spend some time with devotion and prayer, talking about some things going on in the life of the church. And we're gonna ask you to give us some feedback on some ideas that we have going forward. Hey, Jerry Ruffin, we see ya. Good to see you watching. Hey, Jerry. The devotion for tonight is gonna come from the Gospel of Luke, the 10th chapter and the 25th verse. It's the parable of the Good Samaritan. "On one occasion, an expert in the law stood up to test Jesus. He said, 'Teacher, what must I do to inherit eternal life?'" Jesus said, "What is written in the law? How do you read it?" And he answered, "Love the Lord your God with all your heart, and with all your soul, and with all your strength, and with all your mind, and love your neighbor as yourself." Jesus said, "You have answered correctly. Do this, and you will live." But because he wanted to justify himself, so he asked Jesus, "But who is my neighbor?" And in reply, Jesus said, "A man was going down from Jerusalem to Jericho, and he fell into the hands of robbers. They stripped him of his clothes, beat him, and went away, leaving him half-dead. A priest happened to be going down the same road, and when he saw the man, he passed by on the other side. So to a Levite, when he had come to the place and saw him, and passed by on the other side. But a Samaritan, as he was traveling, came where the man was. And when he saw him, he took pity on him. And he went to him, and he bandaged his wounds, poured on oil and wine. Then he put the man on his own donkey, took him to an inn, and took care of him. The next day, he took out two silver coins, and gave them to the innkeeper. 'Look after him,' he said, 'and when I return, I will reimburse you for any extra expense you may have.'" Which of these three do you think was a neighbor to the man who fell into the hands of robbers? The expert in the law replied, "The one who had mercy on him." And Jesus told him, "Go and do likewise." It's real interesting that the question is, "Where and who is my neighbor?" Who is my neighbor? The teacher of the law, the man that was asking the question, wasn't really asking a question he didn't know an answer to. He was challenging Jesus. Challenging Jesus to say something that would put him in jeopardy. Say something that was not acceptable in the temple structure, to the leaders of the time. See, Jesus was a threat. But Jesus received his question, and turned it back on him, and said, "Well, how do you read it? How do you read the law? You're an expert in the law, you tell me." And the guy said, "Well, you love the Lord with all your heart, strength, soul, and mind, and love your neighbor as yourself." And Jesus said, "Well, that's right. Well, just go and do it." Because they both knew the answer, right? They both knew. Then the teacher of the law said something more interesting. Said, "But who is my neighbor?" Which launches us into one of the most famous stories in the New Testament. The story of the Good Samaritan. The three-pen: the priest, the Levite, and the Samaritan, two of which pass by, and one which stops and helps. And Samaritan was the least likely of the three. You see, he would have been the kind of person that the man that was attacked would not have associated with. He was a Samaritan, whom the hearers of the story would have immediately assumed was not the kind of person that they would want taking care of them. But yet, it was he who stopped and offered and rendered aid. It was he who bandaged the man's wounds. It was he who gave up two silver coins. It was he who put him in his own donkey. It was he who did all of those things for the man. And then said, "When I come back, I'll pay you whatever it took to take care of him." And then Jesus looks at the teacher of the law and says, "Who do you think was a neighbor to the man?" And he says, "The one who had mercy on him." He said, "Go and do likewise." You see, the question for the man that fell into the ditch was not who was his neighbor, but who would be his neighbor? Who would be his neighbor? My wife and I got to watch the Mr. Rogers movie the other night. One of the most touching movies I've ever seen. I was deeply moved. I love that song, "Won't You Be My Neighbor." Rings in our ears from our childhood. You see, being a neighbor is a choice, and the Samaritan made a choice. And we often think of ourselves as the Samaritan looking for who should be, who is our neighbor that we should take care of. But it's interesting that Jesus put it in the perspective of, "To the man that was broken, who was a neighbor to you?" And he said, "Go and do likewise." You see, it's easy to love God with all our heart, soul, and mind, but it's harder to love our neighbor since some people are better than others. Some are imperfect, some are annoying, some are stupid, some do things that just profoundly break your heart, some do things that are just unlovable. And in the movie about Fred Rogers that's just showed up on the movie theater just recently, the lead character really is not Fred Rogers. It is another young man that wrote an article about him and his relationship with his father, and forgiving his father, and being in a relationship with him. You see, there are people that are absolutely hard to love, hard to look at as our neighbor. Thomas Merton wrote about this passage. "Who is our neighbor to be loved? Who is the alien not to be loved? Who is the unworthy object and is unloving and unworthy of our love?" The question is a matter of classification. Therefore, it is a matter of judgment also, for to classify is to judge. How then does one classify people and judge them accurately as worthy of love, or of hatred, or of indifference? This is a pretty question. "But to the Lord it was a question that had no meaning, for he said, 'Do not judge, or you too will be judged.' Do not classify, and do not be classified." You see, we don't get a kind of a choice on who's our neighbor. We don't get a choice who's laying in the ditch when we walk by. We don't get a choice. I see a lot on Facebook, social media, classifications, people classifying themselves, putting themselves in categories. And I see a lot of us classifying other people. We make snap judgments. We put labels. Yet it seems that Merton is correct here. Classification is judging, and in judging, we're dividing. And perhaps the best thing we as Christians can do is to not classify, to not put labels, and to not allow ourselves to be labeled. Because to be a Christian is the single greatest defining characteristic of our nature. And it transcends all labels, all categories, all political parties, all political philosophies, right, left, up, down. It transcends every category. When I was in law school, the professor of con law, Dr. Hall, that taught con law that first year for one section was the sponsor for the Christian Legal Society. And in the first devotion that he gave to the Christian Legal Society that year, he said, "Christians are not one or the other. They are not right or left. They don't think this way about the Constitution, or that way. They don't pick or choose among the fruits of the Spirit in Galatians, Chapter 5, or the fruits of the flesh that they reject." No, they embrace all the fruit of the Spirit and reject all the fruit of the flesh. And if we can do that ourselves, and choose to see each other without labels, then maybe, just maybe, we make this world a better place. Maybe, just maybe, we respond as the body of Christ. Maybe, just maybe, we make a difference in this world. Maybe, just maybe, we can have honest and open discussions without labeling, without demonizing, without polarizing. Maybe, just maybe, we can be the body of Christ. And these days, we will overcome, because Jesus is the great overcomer. And I believe that, that we will we will pass through and move to the other side. But we will only do that with the least amount of damage in the greatest numbers, and together, is if we do it as a body of Christ. So let's be the body of Christ. Let's see the world through Jesus's eyes. And let us refuse all labels, and refuse to label. Sam has a prayer for us today. Would you lead us in prayer, Sam?
I would.
Let us bow together. Gracious God, it seems like there's a lot of uncertainty around us. And many of us today, we seek your guidance, your wisdom, the strength in which only you can give. Today, we pray for those whose health is compromised by the COVID-19 virus, and so many other issues that affect our health. We pray for those who suffer from the economic impact of the virus in travel, or manufacturing, or hospitality, or energy, or so many other industries. We pray for healthcare workers and first responders, and other public servants who put themselves in harm's way for us. Today, we pray for our leaders of the world, our country, our state, our city, as they seek to help manage this challenge. And Father God, let us not forget the needs that are always around, who are struggling. We pray for those who live in places of conflict and war, where hunger and drought are ever present, for those who lack medical care at all, for our brothers and sisters who are persecuted because of their faith, for those who live with mental illness, for those who are homeless, for those who face domestic abuse, for those who live with food insecurity, not just all over the world, but right here in our own city. Gracious God, it can be overwhelming. But we know that you tell us over and over again not to be afraid, that you hold us securely in the palm of your hand. God, show us how to trust in you. Show us how to trust in you. As we examine our hearts this Lenten season, help us to repent and turn away from the things of this world, and turn our heart, hands, feet, and prayers toward the concerns of others that only you can heal. And we pray all of this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Hey, guys. So if you can't hear us, please let us know. Donna, did you get sound on? Donna Zano, did you get your sound to work? We're just checking some of these out, make sure. Yeah, we see your comments. Good to go. The first thing we wanted to talk about today. Sam, do you have that?
Yes, today was...
Okay, so how is everybody doing? That's our first thing, is how is everybody doing? Let us know in the comments section. We haven't seen or heard from y'all for a few weeks. So tell us again, how you doing? What's going on in the world? What can we do to help you? We want to know what we're able to do, and know that if there's a need out there that we can meet, we want to hear from you. Sam, how are you doing?
I'm doing very well. You know, I was thinking about this the other day. I've, you know, just from working here, I've actually had the privilege of coming to church to worship. And I know so many of y'all just haven't had that. So, you know, my heart goes out to everybody that's home right now. I know this is day, what? I've lost count. I don't know about y'all. I don't even know what day of the week it is. And I know if your kids are like mine, probably driving you crazy. And today was the first day of distance learning for those y'all that have DeSoto County students. So please, and I'm gonna say this now as an educator, Stephen. I'm gonna say, and this may be to your kids, don't stress over that right now. They're giving a lot of grace, grace over grades. And they're giving, DeSoto County Schools giving us a lot of grace with getting this up and going. So managing all that, I think I've gone to more Zoom meetings in the last three days than I have in my lifetime. So just looking at a computer screen a whole lot. But other than that, I'm well. How are you?
I'm good, I'm good. It's interesting. We're learning new things as clergy and as laity, leading the church. We're learning new skills. And we're coming online as quick as we can with things. You know, we want to be able to keep you connected when you're so separated. Who's building a patio extension? Oh, Justin! Dude, you gotta come to my house. I got a plan for you. I got a plan.
Isn't it kind of too muddy for all that?
Nah, for Justin, man. He gonna get it done.
He may be barbecuing.
The, you know, the big struggle is, for us, is to come online and bringing all this stuff online. Wow, Jerry just let us know that there's two young families that have lost employment because of this fire. Both families about to close on a house and had to back out. So we need to, again, we need to be in prayer for us, for each other. We just need to be lifting each other up. Man, that's tough. And we know that there are a lot of folks facing job shortages and losing their jobs. And we want you to know that we are aware of that here. And we're trying to trim our costs here down at Maples as much as we possibly can. But also, we do have a staff that we're trying to meet their needs and keep them going. We have families that depend on us. And so we're doing everything we can to be great stewards. But I also want to thank you for how you've been faithful online and giving here. If, you know, we could not do what we do here without you. And so, gosh, man, thanks you. Thank you, thank you. If you're invested in here at the church with your life and financially, man, we appreciate it. If you just watch us, man, enjoy. This is our gift to you. There's a lot going on that you don't see that are behind the scenes. We're sitting in the coffee area where we sit on Sunday mornings and people talk. There's bright lights, there's a table. I mean, just all kinds of stuff. Trying to make this work and look decent. There's a lot that we're trying to do to bring us into, you know, the next generation and being cutting edge. And we're really proud of what we're doing here. How do y'all feel about the worship on Sunday mornings? Are y'all liking what you're seeing? Are you liking the way we're doing it? We want, let me tell you a little bit of why we're doing it the way we're doing it. Is we really want to usher you in into the sanctuary. I know that it's tough when you're not in the sanctuary. But, man, we want to give you a chance of saying, hey, we just want you to come on in and feel like you're there. Like, if you have ever watched us online, you may not even notice a whole lot of difference, because we're doing the worship service as if you are actually sitting there. Frankly, I imagine you sitting there when I'm preaching. I kind of, I kind of can see you there. And so we're all kind of injected. Man, I love the picture! Send me pictures of your children sitting in front of the... We're gonna talk about that in a minute. But yeah, we want to see pictures of your kids sitting in front of the TV. Man, that's awesome. Last week, we had over 1,700 people reached, but over 1,400 people watched our service. That, to me, is amazing. I think God is blessing us here, and I think he's opening doors for amazing new ministry for us. And we have people all the way from all over the state of Mississippi, all over the United States. But we have friends of mine from Africa that are watching. They don't watch live, because it's different time zone, way different time zone. But they're watching live, and they're part of our family. And so that's pretty cool.
Donna wants to know, how can we serve and still stay safe?
Hey, I got a plan for you. One of the things that is happening around here is we've got we've got healthcare workers that are short on face masks, those little visor things, and masks and rebreathers. We have ordered, just me and Holly have ordered these face shields that have these little headbands, and it clips on, and then you throw it away. We have figured out there's a way to make those that can be made out of plastic dividers or plastic sheet protectors that you can just pick up anywhere. So, you know, that's, you know, we can cut those things out and put them on. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna provide you a template. And we'll put it on Facebook, on the website. We'll give you a YouTube video showing you how to do it. And then you can make those and drop them off here at the church, or drop them off at Olive Branch at the hospital. If you have any N95 masks, if you're not using them, donate them to Olive Branch Methodist. If you have any of the little paper masks, and you don't absolutely need them, or contractor masks, or painting masks, any of those things, you know, donate those to OB Methodist, because supplies are short. And they may not be short now, but they will eventually if we keep moving at the pace we're moving. So that's one way. We will have other ways that you can get involved. Call and check on each other.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, go ahead.
Donna, you are already doing all this, being part of the Impact Team. And this is for anybody that's watching. For those y'all don't know what the Impact Team is, this is the Maples Pastoral Care Team. And we're calling and checking on folks, especially those who are very quarantined, like they can't leave at all. You know, you can do that from the safety of your own home. Just call them, see what's going on. If they have a need, there's folks that are more than willing to help. They need groceries delivered, you know, things like that. So Donna, it sounds like you're already doing a lot of this stuff. So we're kind of taking our cues from you with this. So that's just another way to serve. And if anybody's interested in, you know, getting on the Impact Team, we're needing all sorts of folks. Just send me, send us an email. My cellphone number is down there in the comments. It's one of the pinned comments. If you want to just text your information. And also, if you have any other questions as we're going through this town hall that you don't want to leave in the comments section, please do that as well. So that's just another way to serve.
Sam, while you're at it, why don't you tell them a bit about some of the things that we're offering? We're working all the time, and you're gonna have some more things rolling out in the next few days. We're pushing hard to stay kind of at that cutting edge, to keep you engaged. But Sam, talk to them about your Sunday School class and what we're moving to. We've been doing some stuff. Hey, Ricky Pizenza says, "Little Food Pantry has open spots." That's a great point.
So let me talk about that real quick. You're absolutely right, there's a lot of open spots. But since the Olive Branch Food Pantry is shut right now, we have food here at the church as well that I'm slowly but surely putting it out there just so we can, so it doesn't stay here, so we can put it out to our community. But absolutely, there are postings available for that. So whenever you do brave going to the grocery store, which I haven't done since Saturday, so I don't know what it's like now. I'm sure it's still pretty busy.
Walmart had parking spaces open this afternoon.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, how about that?
Half-empty.
I went to the Piggly Wiggly and by Hail Ya Saturday just to try something new, but...
They have a Piggly Wiggly and by Hail Ya?
They do. They have a Piggly Wiggly and by Hail Ya.
Didn't know that.
Yes.
Things you learn.
Only 15 minutes away, so.
There you go.
But anyway, yeah, so sign up for that. And there is, we have a page, Maples Little Food Pantry. It's on Facebook. And Denise Tredway has been heading that up. So click on that and sign up for a spot. Or whenever you go to the grocery store, just pull up in the parking lot and stock it, because it really does not say, "Stay stocked long." I have, just since I've been here, I've been watching cars drive by several times to see what's in there. So I'm working on that. We're gonna keep it stocked with the food we have here to get it out to our community. So anyway, I hope that answers the question. Stephen's monitoring for other questions. And I'm glad y'all are saying that you're enjoying the service on Sunday. We really, really appreciate it. I just love having this kind of feedback here. So let me talk about Sunday School. So this past week, and what I'm doing, it's basically a call-in. This Sunday, we're gonna do it on Zoom, which is a different platform than free conference call.
A little more stable, right?
I think it's a little more stable, because I've been taking my seminary classes in that fashion. And we had a great class last night. And really, once you learn how to manage it, it's pretty easy. So look for an email in the next couple of days from the church showing how to log on to Zoom. And if you don't, if you're not tech savvy, and you don't have a laptop with a camera, or you don't want yourself seen on video, there is a call-in option as well, which works a little bit, which works similar than the conference call. So I'm gonna be doing that again this Sunday. And it's open to anybody that wants to call in. And I don't have the numbers in front of me. But like I said, look for your email. And please, 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 if you are not getting constant contact emails from Maples, we need to know about that. So send me a text right there. You see my number in the comments section, or email jane@mapleschurch.org.
Give them that again.
Jane@mapleschurch.org.
Send Jane your email address so that we can get you in constant contact.
Right.
And look, if you're listening, or if you see people listening on Sunday mornings, we'll put this out. We need to remember to do this on Sunday morning. But if you're in Kenya, like, we got a Kenyan family that are friends of mine that watch us. Man, they need to be on our constant contact, because, you know what? They're plugging in every week. The interesting thing about all this is that the expanse that we serve has expanded. It's bigger. The world is now shrinking while we're distancing. Strange. But there's some huge opportunities that we're gonna have here to find ways of being community. Sam's gonna be teaching Sunday School this Sunday morning. I think there's a couple of other Sunday School classes. Check with your Sunday School teacher. I think some of the other Sunday School classes are gonna have some up and running. We don't, we're, we're not gonna say out loud which ones they are or not, but, uh, check with your Sunday School teacher to see if your Sunday School class is gonna offer that. We will be glad to help them.
Right. And one other thing, if you miss Sunday School, uh, I will have mine available on podcast, uh, like I did last week.
Where would they find that, Sam?
So, uh, you can go to castbox.fm, C-A-S-T-B-O-X dot FM. And you just, uh, click on the search button and type in Maples Church. It's all one word. And it'll pull up all the episodes that we've uploaded so far. And so far, there's only one and it's from last Sunday. That will be available immediately after the Sunday School hour on Sunday.
So, um, we're glad, uh, to have that up and running. We have a new YouTube channel called Maples Church Live. We cannot go live on YouTube until we have a thousand followers.
Subscribers.
Subscribers?
Yeah.
So subscribers, a thousand subscribers. So Rick Pizenza, get out there and help us get those, get those up, buddy. Or whoever, just invite folks to like our, uh, YouTube channel. Uh, once we hit a thousand, we can go live. We're trying to use every conceivable technology that's out there. What we have here has been, uh, amazing to be able to do what we can do.
Keep sending any questions you have for us right now in the comments section too. So while we're on the air, we can answer those, uh, as well.
Hey to Matty Sal checking in from over in Bama or Northeast Mississippi.
Oh boy.
Up in, up in the hill country. Glad to see you checking in and loving, uh, loving that you're, uh, checking in with us. And your mom too, so that's great. So what is, what's next for us, Sam? Let's, let me check.
Wednesday night?
Well, yeah, let's talk a little bit about Wednesday night. So tonight's Wednesday night and we would normally be doing a meal. And of course, we're not doing a meal. And we, we probably aren't for a few weeks and maybe, uh, for the rest of the semester. Some of you are in Sam's class, some of you are in my adult confirmation class. We're trying to toss around the idea of what it would look like on Wednesday nights or maybe Sunday nights or maybe individual nights during the week, uh, to, to continue this. And so we'd like to hear from all of you. Would you be interested in, uh, going to a, um, a Zoom meeting with twelve to fifteen other people, um, in a class taught by Sam? The one that he taught is not real conducive to the online environment because it's hands-on participatory. And so there'd be some strangeness there. But, um, would you be interested in attending his, or a Bible study taught by Sam or study? I could also talk one. We could tag team or tag, tag teach?
Tag teach.
Tag teach.
Tag teach.
Okay, only if I can come as the assassin. Any of y'all Memphis wrestling fans remember the assassin? Uh, or maybe Moon Dog, who knows? Definitely not Handsome Jimmy. So, um, yeah. But we could tag teach, um, or we could take turns. One of the other things we've talked about is doing a large study where we're just kinda lecturing online. I don't know if that's something that might appeal. Hey, let us know if you don't wanna let us know in the comments. Uh, shoot us a text, an email if you got my cell phone number. Don't text right now because we're recording on my phone. But shoot us a text, let us know which one, um. None of our, Sandy Hill asked the question, is any church families affected by the tornado? Not that I know of. Um, I do know some of the people affected, but none of our church family that I know of. Maddie might be able to tell us more since that was up in her neck of the woods. Jay Ruffin says, anything's good as long as Sam does the syllabus. That sounds right, uh, because he's good at that. And that's why we hired him. Cause I'm not. So we, uh, yeah. If, if we could, um, hear from you, would you be looking for a large format where we just lecture? You just sit and listen. Maybe it's on Facebook Live. Would you like something more interactive that we could do on, um, on Zoom? How do you, how would you feel about that? And if we have enough people that are interested, uh, we would really maybe start spinning off small groups taught by other people. This might be a great opportunity for us to really engage in groups of ten or twelve, um, fifteen, uh, that do life together. Life groups. So there's a lot of opportunity here. So let us know about that, um, as we go along. So Sam, would you talk about the children's video for Palm Sunday? What we want from that? That's a real exciting thing. Everybody hold on.
Oh yes.
We're pumped.
All right, so, um, this idea just kinda came to me yesterday, so, and, and I think, and, and he liked it, so. Yay. So Palm Sunday is April the fifth.
Correct.
Yeah, Easter is April 12th, Palm Sunday be April 5th. I think that's right. I don't know what day this is. But, um, normally for our Palm Sunday services, you remember we usually have our children, uh, meet up in the, the North Ex area with palm leaves and they process in, uh, with their hosannas. Since, you know, we are likely not gonna be doing in-person worship, uh, by Palm Sunday, what we thought would be a great idea is to have your kids or you video your kids processing, uh, somewhere with, if, if they don't have a palm leaf.
At your house?
At your house, yeah. Uh, with something.
In the yard?
Something that kinda looks like a palm leaf.
In your living room?
Right.
At your, you know, outside around the house?
Yeah.
Into the storm house if you have one?
Walking around waving.
Garage?
Yeah.
Just anywhere.
Yeah, right.
Don't go in the bathroom.
Yeah, please.
But other than that.
But yeah, you wave your little, uh, it could be a long grass stalk or whatever. We're trying to see, uh, if we can actually get some palm leaves by then that you might be able to pick up at church.
Yeah, we would put them out on the front porch of the church, uh, and you could come by. I know some people will be anxious about coming and touching something and it, but, but if you're, feel okay with it, we might set those out.
A feathered cat toy?
A feathered.
Good job, Emily.
Yeah, sure, okay. But we would lay those out and you could take them and, um, and take them home and film that. And what we're gonna do is, tell them what you're gonna do with it, Sam?
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take all those videos and we're gonna put them into a video collage.
Actually, not Sam, but Brennan.
Brennan will, yes, because I.
Brennan Ballard.
You don't want me doing it.
You know, the real hero around here nowadays.
That's right.
Brennan Ballard.
He's gonna take them and put them in a collage and we will play that on our online worship. A mashup of all the kids processing in. So it's neat because you actually get to take an active part in worship, um, in your own home. Kinda like you've been doing anyway the last couple of Sundays.
And then the kids get to see themselves.
So who should they send the picture to or the video to?
Send the video to, uh, Joey at mapleschurch.org, right? Or you can send it to, uh, me.
Or Sarah.
Nah, just send it to Joey. He'll get it to Brennan. Uh, they'll mash it up. Uh, that'd be the best thing. Take your video, um, send it to us. If you can zip it in a zip file so that we could unzip it, uh, condense it, uh, so that we can do it that way, that'd be great.
An ostrich feather.
An ostrich feather, just whatever works. But processing in hallelujahs, loud hosannas, be kinda cool. Go as far out as you want, dress up like real people. If you got a donkey, maybe find you somebody to dress like Jesus. I don't know. Just, just ideas, be as creative, creative. Be creative, it's gonna be a lot of fun. And then Palm Sunday, we're hoping that we will, we will do our readers theater like we normally do. It's gonna be really great. We're gonna usher you in, um, to that space. It's gonna be powerful and we're already working towards that. And some pretty special things for Easter. We don't know yet what's gonna be in store for Easter and we're holding our breath and praying real hard. We're preparing for both, uh, both directions. Joey just said a phone video is fine. Don't worry about compressing it. Okay, so good correction. Thank you, Joey. Joey's online and watching, so that, that's a good word. So all you gotta do is shoot it on the phone and send it to Joey. And we'll make it work. So good deal. We're really, uh, excited about, um, how God is forcing us to be creative. We are already a creative bunch. Joey's one of the most creative people I've ever worked with. Lot of creativity, um, so proud, um, of what he does already. But man, we're just, we're pushing the envelope every week. We're saying, how do we get more creative? How do we get people more engaged? How we connect them?
And if you think about it, this is one of the easiest ways to invite people to church right now.
Yeah.
You know?
And least threatened.
There you go.
You can sit around in your bathroom. We don't know. No. Do you, I mean, you know, you can eat your breakfast while you're sitting there, you know?
Joey just put his text, uh, his phone number there where you can text that video to. Joey, I'm going to pin that comment so that it's there. Now you can see his, uh, phone number there for y'all to send your videos in. And, uh, it, like I said, this isn't limited to Maples Children. I mean, uh, let's just make this as, as big and as wonderful as we possibly can. I, I think it's gonna be really, really special.
Yeah.
Really cool.
Be a lot of fun. Also, let's, um, let's say a few words in the last few minutes here that we're gonna be together. Let's say a few words about, um, um, the, uh, prayer, um, event Sunday night. This Sunday night, um, we are hosting at seven o'clock an online meetup prayer event. We will be live streaming it on Facebook Live. It will be, um, it'll be interactive, uh, in that you will be able to hear some voices. And we're gonna give you an opportunity to, to, to post some prayers in the comments as we pray together. It's gonna be a really special time. We worked on it today and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. Some really good music at the beginning. I think you're gonna be, um, I think you're gonna be really surprised and it's, it's gonna be really cool. So I invite you, seven o'clock, if you're not doing anything else, uh, come, uh, to the altar to pray. Come and join us in praying that God will deliver us from this, uh, coronavirus epidemic, that, that he intervenes in a miraculous way. We, you know, are joking around here because we like to have fun. But we know it's a serious time and we know that, um, there's a lot of people hurting and a lot of people scared and a lot of people lonely. And for our extroverts, they are really going stir crazy. There's families that are gonna be, um, dealing with loss of income and there will be an economic price to pay for this for a while. And we're gonna have to walk this stony road together.
Yep.
And we will. And I believe that God will see us through it. When I was, um, when I was in the eighth grade, my dad got laid off, um, from Tyrone Hydraulics in Corinth, Mississippi. He was a machinist and worked at that factory and drove thirty minutes and worked mostly nights. And for the next several years, um, he, um, would work a while and then get laid off from that job. It was a tough time. It was mid eighties. A lot of transition in manufacturing. Daddy worked, you know, with a company called Metal Masters. He worked for Delta. Finally got a job as a frontline supervisor at a, a plastic extrusion plant and then became a, actually, he was a maintenance man, then became supervisor, and then he got hired at, um, at a copper tubing, extrusion place that made copper tubing for high efficiency, um, air conditioner, copper tubing. So, um, but in the depths of it, um, there was a time where he was out of work for several months and, um, he cleaned up cars and ran them through the auto sales in Baldwin. He'd buy Chrysler K car or Chevy Celebrity or Chevy Cavalier from the early eighties, late seventies, clean it up and then run it through the car sale, make a couple of hundred bucks. He and a guy named Sonny, Sonny Johnson. And, um, I was riding in his nineteen eighty-three Chevy Custom Deluxe, three on the tree, no air conditioning, no power pickup. And we were listening to WBIP FM out of Boonville, Mississippi, and we were riding, going somewhere, as he liked to say, loafing. And, um, I was a little nervous. I was eighth grade and I understood what was going on and I asked daddy, I said, look, dad, are we gonna be okay? And I'll never forget that he paused. And he looked at me and he said, um, son, Lord's brought us this far. He's not gonna leave us now. And that made a, you're, an eighth grade boy feel very secure to hear that from his father. And I'm, I'm saying that to you tonight. God has brought us this far and he's not gonna leave us now. We may have to change lifestyles. We may have to change a lot of things, but he is not gonna leave us now. There's so many good things that are going on in our lives and so many rich blessings. Remember them. Share them. Post them on this feed. Um, post them on our Facebook account. Share them with each other. God is still good all the time and all the time. God is still good. Hey, we love you here at Maples. Sam, any last words?
None that I know of. Just, um, continue to pray, be in prayer, um, partner with each other in prayer, check on each other. You know, we're, we're gonna do our best to, to check on you. And, and, you know, like Steven said, we're all in this together. And, and we're gonna make it. We're going to make it and we're gonna be better for it. So, uh, right now, we gotta use this to, um, to reach, to reach souls for the kingdom of God. And I believe that's what we're doing here. It's in a different way. Like Steven said, you know, we're kinda being, um, you know, pushed into this direction, but, uh, I'm, I'm an eternal optimist that I think, um, I think this is gonna benefit the kingdom in the long run. Like I said, invite somebody to church. You know, church has never been about the building. It just hasn't. We're, we're the church, so, but that's it.
Okay. Well, guys, we, this will be our last time to do this. Uh, we're taking up about forty-five minutes of, of your time. We hope that this has been a good time together. Meeting online. We'll do more of this if, if you like it. Let us know that you liked it and we'll do this some more. We'll do this, try to update and, uh, connect you up, um, kinda like the nightly news, but not every night. So, um, we're really glad to be your pastors. We're glad of what God is doing through our whole staff here, through Joey and Joel and Sarah and Jane and Pam and, and Amy and, um, Shay and the Learning Center. Our custodian, Elwood, our new handy man, Fixit, we're so proud of. Man, he is a blessing, amazing. I mean, Mr. Fixit, I mean, mighty talented. So, um, all of those things, um, we're just, from our staff to you, thank you. We love y'all. We're praying for you. Pray for us. And, um, we'll see you back here next time. Don't forget, Sunday morning at ten thirty, invite somebody. Nine thirty for Sunday School. Nine thirty for Sunday School. Call in on the Sunday School line. Ten thirty, tune in to worship. Invite somebody, share it, um, invite them to come and check us out. And then, um, Sunday night, seven o'clock, uh, prayer time. Uh, it'll be powerful. Sam, will you pray for us as we leave?
I will. Let us pray. Gracious God, once again, we are reminded of just how great and awesome you are. God be with us throughout the coming days and weeks as we, um, as we discern many, many things in our lives. Keep us in close contact with one another. Give us the courage and the wisdom and the strength to carry out your work in the, in the midst of times even like this. Because in times even like this, you are good all the time. Amen.
Hey guys, thank you for checking us out. If you got in late, uh, Patricia, I saw that. If you got in late, um, we will have it uploaded in just a second. We will say finish and then it'll say, do you wanna upload it? It'll take two to three minutes and then you should be able to view it online. It'll be archived on our site, so come back and watch the whole thing. Great information on there, I hope. So?
Yep.
All right. Thanks, guys. Have a good evening. Um, hug your children, hug, hug your loved ones and, uh, we'll see you next time.